The Monday, January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at five thirty P. M. For the purpose of this meeting, there is a quorum of the council present. Item number two and three, the invocation, will be led by Mr. Gene Anderson, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Mayor Pro Tim Hughes. Please rise.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. Father, we acknowledge our weaknesses and our failures and our shortcomings. And so we pray, Father, for your grace and mercy and for your guidance tonight as we conduct the city's business, that you give us wisdom and understanding to do the right thing. And, Father, we'll praise you in all these things, for asking in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Item number four is recognition of Martin Luther King Junior Day. The Paris City Council wishes to recognize Martin Luther King Junior Day, which will be celebrated January sixteenth this year. This holiday celebrates the birthday, the life, and the achievements of M. L. K. Junior. Dr. King is known for his contribution to the American Civil Rights Movement in the nineteen-sixties. His most famous work is his "I Have a Dream" speech, delivered in nineteen sixty-three, in which he spoke of his dream of a United States that is void of segregation and racism. Item four B is the Citizens Forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation to no more than two minutes. Unless an item is on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or a staff person with specific factual information. Claims against the city, city council members or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for Citizens Forum. If necessary, the city council may convene into executive session under chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Alvin Atwood. I live at twenty-four nineteen Bonham Street. Um, I don't come to talking to people and all that stuff too much, so y'all bear with me. I could text you and get everything I need to write down. Um, I come from a city for up there in Dallas area. This is just, you know, things that me and my neighbors been talking about, and I don't know who to talk to. I don't even know who my representative for my district is. But we looking at the sidewalks that we're spending all that money on going down there in North Main. That was pretty nice, but you can bet almost every bit of that was wasted. The sidewalks in front of my house, I had them redone. I even paid part for all part of the labor and stuff. That money was pretty much wasted. The sidewalks that we're putting in, we're putting them in too low. The ground's growing right over. I, I take care of my sidewalk in front of my house so that, you know, for my property value. Some people, you know, don't have the means. Edger, three, four hundred dollars these days. You know, it's not real cheap. And we're putting them in today, gum, low. And I just, I, I think that it's pretty, pretty big waste of money. I don't know if that was a, you know, D. O. T. thing, considering it's on North Main, or if that's a city of Paris thing. But, you know, it's just something that I'd like for y'all to kind of, I don't know, talk to an engineer or whoever's over that. I don't know who's over that. Anyway, talk to whoever that is and say, hey, man, you know, that's a lot of money that's going down there. I'm sorry I have anxiety and I didn't take my medicine, so I sound a little funny. Oh, I know I'm limited, and I apologize. Couple of things I want to talk about. Oh, I don't know if y'all are able to or not, but that train, now that we've got all these businesses and things, you know, I appreciate y'all bringing all these businesses into town. Good job, very good job. Uh, but now the train's gotten busy, and I don't know if that's a federal thing, or if y'all can, you know, do something about that, but that, I live on Bonham Street, twenty-four nineteen, down by old Texas grocery in Oak Park, and that train comes through there at three o'clock in the morning, it's brrrr, and it's, it'll wake you up. It's woke up my wife. She works for law enforcement on the night shift right now, and that gets kind of tough. Uh, it's, it's pretty tough. I don't know if that's something y'all could, you know, hey, y'all need to calm that down or not, but if y'all could, I'd, I'd appreciate it. And last, and I'll go away, uh, the downtown area. Man, y'all have done a great job of bringing in all these businesses, and I really am. And most of the people that I know, I'm sorry.
Can you start wrapping up? Just a few seconds, your two minutes is up, please.
Okay. Uh, now, I'll, I'll come back, because I got like four more things, and I planned on a two-part thing. Anyway, I appreciate y'all's time. Thank y'all so much. If y'all could consider the things that I've talked about, I'd appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council, please come forward.
I'm Don Walker with Christians in Action, two forty-eight Second Street Southwest, and I'd like to give, who is the mayor today? You're the mayor today?
Every day.
Oh, you're the mayor every day. There's a deal, it appears a deal. I'm always got a deal. And I don't know, maybe I'll give this young man one of them if he wants it. I didn't make up two or three this time. Last time I made up one for everybody. Oh, I did give this one to the first. First thing I'd like to say to you is I sure do appreciate the man that shook hands with me the last time I was here. That's the first respect that I've ever got, and I sure appreciate that. I want you to know that you're trying to ask the community for twenty-seven million We have street people on the streets that freeze at night, and we have street people on the street that gets hot during the summertime. It looks to me like out of twenty-seven million dollars, if you get it or if you don't get it, that the city should be able to make a shelter for these people. I'm not asking for me, I'm asking for some of y'all's citizens that is not doing what, not doing as well as maybe y'all are, or maybe they might be doing better. I don't know. But that's who I'm asking for. Put someone in charge. Let the police come by and check it every once in a while. Give them some training. And help them. Now, I've done it for forty years, trying to be a good citizen for our community. And our little shelter has paid for every bit of that. Well, we've asked you for help, but it's, it's, it's no help coming from you. So I'm asking you to take it on yourself, to become a good leader of this community, and provide something for the least fortunate in our town. I want to thank you. I imagine you'll be seeing me again. I don't have much time more. I'd like to told you a story, but I don't know how much time I got left, Mayor.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds. Well, fifteen seconds is not enough for the story, so maybe next time I can tell you the story. Thank y'all. God bless you, and I hope y'all consider the less fortunate in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward. Seeing no one, the Citizens Forum is now closed. Next item is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council. With such approval, applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda, a council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and consider it as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item from the agenda for discussion? Seeing not, uh, none, I'll have a motion to approve all items.
So moved.
A motion and a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero. Item number eleven, discuss, conduct a public hearing, and possibly act on an ordinance setting forth registration requirements and credit extension guidelines for credit access businesses by adding Article five point one-two Credit Access Businesses to Chapter Five Business Regulations of the City of Paris Code of Ordinances. Staff, do you have a presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of City Council. This has been brought back to you. As you recall, at the October tenth City Council meeting of last year, the United Way in Texas Appleseed provided you a presentation about the credit access business and the model ordinances that T. M. L. and others have, have adopted. They requested that we consider adopting a similar ordinance. City Council asked that we then bring back a, an ordinance back to you. And so at your November council meeting, we brought back to you a, a version based off of the T. M. L. uh, a model that has been adopted by many communities in Texas over the last ten years. At that time, City Council didn't have any edits to make on that, so we recommended that, given this would be adding ordinances to existing businesses, that we, that we add an extra step, not a required step, but an added step, a courtesy step, to do a public hearing, notifying those businesses, which we are doing tonight. And so, um, I won't go through the ordinance again. I, I added the information that you had at the November meeting to this. Nothing has changed in the ordinance, it's the same draft you had before. We did send out notices to our known credit access businesses. We, we use a state website that, that, that identifies, uh, cabs in, in the community, so we identified those. We mailed them all a courtesy letter for tonight. And we have been contacted by a number of, of cab entities and representatives, and had some very good discussions, and very, uh, very, very helpful conversation about this topic. Um, I do believe, uh, some of them are here tonight, and so they'll be talking during the public hearing. So with this, um, uh, we do think that there is some possibility to, to sit back and discuss some options here, and so, but obviously, we will take your lead on what you wish to do. But we recommend that you, that you proceed the public hearing, that, that you listen to the thoughts of, that's presented tonight, and provide us direction. So, and I'll take it, I'll take after that where, where you want me to take it, so.
Thank you. I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition of this item to please come forward.
How are y'all doing this evening?
Please state your name and address.
My name is Shelby. My address is seventy-two County Road thirty-three one hundred, Sumner, Texas, seven-five-four six eight six. Like I said, my name is Shelby Wilson. Um, I really want to thank y'all for letting me speak tonight. Um, I grew up here in Paris. Um, I was born and raised here, graduated from Northmar. Um, I'm actually in Mr. Mahir Punkin's district, so I grew up in Sumner. Um, like I said, I've been with Title Max now for almost three years, and so, um, I've actually been the only general manager at the location here, so I've been able to see firsthand how we've actually been able to truly help our community. Um, I've had the pleasure of helping so many different customers from all different walks of life. Um, one kind of example is during COVID, I had a gentleman whose wife had actually passed away. Um, we, uh, he wasn't able to cover his funeral expenses, so he came in and saw us, and so, um, during his time of need, we weren't only able to help him do his, or cover his funeral expenses, uh, but we also were able to help, you know, lift some of that burden off of him during his time of, uh, need. So, um, we're really here to help our customers and be flexible with them. Um, last week, I had a gentleman who had gotten a little bit off track. Um, I was able to get him right back on track, get him taken care of, and at the end of the, um, transaction, you know, he did, he told me, um, that I made his whole year and that I was able to help him. So, um, you know, that's really what we're here for. Um, at the end of the day, you know, we've helped so many people, we helped them pay their rent, we helped them get groceries, we helped them keep their lights on. Um, so at the end of the day, that's really what we're there for. And, um, also, I want to add that we've only had, in the two and a half years that we've been open, um, two complaints, um, from the Consumer Credit Commissioner, so that is something to be noted. Um, like I said, at the end of the day, we really are just there to help our customers in their time of need. Um, and that's really all I have for you. Like I said, thank y'all so much for being, or allowing me to come here tonight and speak to y'all, so.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Savannah Kitchens. My address is five zero one eight Kings Park Drive in Tyler, Texas, uh, seven-five-seven oh three. I want to thank you guys so much for giving me the time to speak with you today. Um, like I said, my name is Savannah, and I'm the District Director of Operations for Title Max. I was born and raised in Texas, and I've lived in the East Texas community, specifically Tyler, since twenty sixteen. I have also been with Title Max for eleven years, with ten of those years being working directly with customers as a general manager. Um, with my years of experience in the financial industry, I have witnessed firsthand how the ordinance can affect our customers. Although the ordinance comes from good intentions, it is going to create more issues for our customers because it is so inflexible with the mandatory twenty-five percent principal reduction requirement. It causes our customers to be more likely to default and ultimately puts them more into a financial bind. I was the general manager in a different city that passed a similar ordinance years back, and I saw firsthand from that how it affected my customers. Customers would often have to end up driving an hour away outside of the local community to have more product options, since I was no longer able to service them as before. We are a highly fed, regulated industry and are audited by the Office of Consumer Credit Commissioner often. They visit our stores and have full access to our computers with their own login and are able to check and review any loan folders that they would like to. Our company would appreciate the opportunity to sit down with the council and staff. We have already had an initial meeting with staff and would love to continue that conversation. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Savannah. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor and council members, my name is Rob Norcross. Guess my address is eight seventeen San Antonio Street, Austin, Texas, seven-eight-seven oh one. Um, I am the Executive Director of the Consumer Service Alliance of Texas, which is the statewide trade association for the credit access businesses. Many of our members operate stores here in Paris. We typically represent the larger companies that operate in multiple states and not so much the independent operators, but we work very closely with them on policy issues. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that, um, I really appreciate the way you've handled this. Other than Abilene, Paris is the first city since two thousand and eleven to contact the industry about the ordinance, so we could have a conversation before you passed it, and we really appreciate that. Your staff has been wonderful to work with, they've been very responsive over, over the holidays. And it's, it's been, um, it's, it's been a delight, um, to, to work with your people. Um, I have one page here that I passed out to everybody, just by way of history, and I'm just going to make this one point, because I think we've kind of covered this with the other folks that have testified today. The legislation to regulate and license and supervise credit access businesses was passed by the Texas Legislature in two thousand and eleven, giving the Consumer Credit Commissioner, which you've heard about, the authority to examine, license, fine, revoke licenses. I mean, they, they go in and look at loan documents, and they've got all the supervisory authority that the banking department has with the banks. That started in two thousand and eleven. Part of the legislation required the credit access businesses to make a report to the state every quarter, beginning January first, two thousand and twelve, of every loan they make. No other consumer credit company has that kind of requirement, but, so every quarter, we have been filing reports with the state since January first, two thousand and twelve, about every loan we've made. So we know what's going on. And one of the things that they authorized in two thousand and eleven was multiple payment loans instead of single payment loans. Because if your car breaks down and you got to get a new water pump on your car to get to work, because if you can't get to work, you lose your job, and then bad things really start happening, you can't tell the mechanic how much it's to charge you for the water pump. He's going to tell you. And a lot of times, people couldn't make that payment at, in one payment. So the legislature authorized installments in two thousand and eleven. And if you look at this piece of paper on the third line, and this is prepared from the state, this is not from our organization, this is off of the state's website. I, I didn't want to bring anything that I put together, because, you know, they've got all this information. You'll notice from two thousand and seventeen on the far right-hand side of the page to two thousand and twenty-two, towards the middle of the page, that the number of loans, number of multiple payment installment loans has gone from forty-five percent to eighty-four percent. So most people, most customers these days like multiple payment loans because they're easier to pay back. You'll also notice that the refinancings have dropped dramatically. When you had single payment loans, people had to refinance them often, two or three times, because they couldn't pay them back. Now with multiple installment loans, people can make the smaller payments, and they don't need to refinance. They just pay the loan off and, and you're done. The ordinance that T. M. L. has championed was written in two thousand and eleven. Most of the cities that passed the ordinance adopted the ordinance in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. We've had very little activity in the last six or seven years with cities adopting the ordinance. So what, I would like to echo what the other folks have said, is we'd like to work with you, work with your staff, on maybe updating the ordinance to make some changes to what they wrote in two thousand and eleven, when everybody was doing single payment loans, to make the ordinance match what everybody's doing today, which is taking out multiple payment loans. And I, I think we can get there. I mean, it's, you know, the ordinance is, I mean, we're six pages long, but we're looking at adjusting some numbers on one page. So, I mean, I think we can, you know, get in the middle somewhere. I mean, obviously, the, the city staff is not going to give us everything we asked for, but, um, we need to do, the market's different today than it was in two thousand and eleven. So if we're going to do an ordinance, we should do a today ordinance, not a two thousand and eleven ordinance, and I think we can get you something within the next couple of weeks that, that gets us there. So anyway, I'm sorry I went a little long, but if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to.
Well, I think just the comment that, you know, we appreciate your information, and I think certainly we want our, our decision to be based on as many facts as we can gather, and that our staff is, is capable of, of working with you all and having the time to bring it back to us where it's amenable to everyone.
I think we're all in agreement that what we want to prohibit is the really bad cases that get out of hand. Where people pay and pay and pay, and, and for whatever reason, they don't contact the store, and, and maybe they could contact, they can contact the state now, sometimes people don't do that. Maybe they could contact the city, which they could under this ordinance, and we eliminate those cases that just spiral out of control. But we don't want to take what was written in two thousand and eleven and, and keep people from getting the kind of loan they need today. Because sometimes, you know, you need five payments of fifty dollars instead of four payments of seventy-five dollars. And, you know, that's reasonable. I mean, state law caps this all at six months anyway, so nobody can ever do anything that's more than six months. But we can talk details with the staff, and I'm sure we can get you something in, in a couple of weeks.
Can I ask, what staff have you met with so far?
Um, the city attorney's office and, and everybody, Rob, Grayson, Stephanie.
Okay.
They've all been very helpful. And again, over the holidays, I mean, they've been great.
And I was invited to meet with Victoria. Is Victoria here? I've been ill, so I've...
You sound like you're a little raspy.
Oh, I'm so much better.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
We've got a football game to get to, so I'm going to shut up.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, I will, like, close the public hearing and, uh, discussion or direction to staff.
My personal opinion on this is I, I, it doesn't hurt to see what they have to say. I, I think that we're a, this council is very different from many other cities, where we actually like to sit down and discuss things, get the facts, understand what, what's at stake here for citizens, and I think that it, it doesn't hurt to, to figure that out, so I'm in, I'm in favor of it.
So what, what does staff think? I mean, y'all have met with them and talked to them about different, uh, ideas, I'm sure, or suggestions, so what do y'all think? Or can y'all even speak on what, what, uh, what came out of it?
He's graciously already provided a red line of what the kinds of changes he would like, so we are already, uh, that process is already started. Um, you know, as the city attorney, I think we're, are best served by trying to work this through and see if there's something that both addresses the concerns we're trying to address and, uh, is satisfactory, at least to a point, to the industry. There are a couple of the amended ordinances that we've talked about, Austin and Dallas, they're undergoing litigation right now, and I think if, if we can get the, the industry representatives on board with what we're trying to do, our chances of that go way down. So I would like to have the opportunity to continue talking with these folks. When we talk about having a meeting with them, you know, if, if the, if the United Way wants to be a part of that as well, I think what we're talking about is meeting with stakeholders, uh, so that everybody's represented, and we can come up with something that, that serves our citizens without being an undue, uh, burden on business.
Yeah, and, and my next question, you know, how many communities or counties, like, within the next, I mean, within the thirty-mile range, you know, where people, because somebody made a great point, that people just drive to the next community that don't have this ordinance, and they do business with them. So, um, does Commerce, Sulfur Springs, Hugo, do they have this ordinance, or do we even know?
Uh, I'm not aware about all the towns. We know that a few have. I don't think those towns have. Uh, at least they didn't, they didn't come up in our research. The, the bigger communities, like, uh, Longview and Sherman and those, Denton, those ones had, uh, but I, it did not come in my research that Sulfur Springs and Commerce and some of our smaller neighbors had done. of our smaller neighbors had done this.
Yeah, yeah, so to her point, people will just leave Paris and drive 30 minutes and do business with, with other communities that don't have it. So I'm, I'm really in favor of talking and seeing if we can get this resolved in a equitable way for everybody, and I, I don't, I don't see the hurt in it.
I just want to echo something that you said, Stephanie. I want to make sure that we do invite the stakeholders to that meeting and to discuss, because I know that there's a, there are a lot of folks in this community that are truly affected by this, and I want to make sure that everyone's available for these meetings. Who knows? I mean, if we can come to a, come to a good agreement, maybe this could be a new process for other communities going forward.
Right.
Are there discussion?
Yeah, I was, I've, I've got a lot of skepticism to regulating any businesses, I'll go ahead and say that upfront. I, I wholeheartedly do not want to do what Dallas and Austin have done, those are two of the most poorly-run cities in the state of Texas. I'll say it, I mean, look at their budget, look at what they do. I, I, regulating a business on a city spectrum is, in my opinion, an extremely slippery slope. It's something that I think, not only on the legality side of what could come about from free enterprise, and, and like I say, you know, I would be hard-pressed to see something. I, I would definitely want the industry guys and the local lenders to be able to bless whatever this may come about. Know a lot of people had family that, that had to have this service, and it helped a lot of them. Some people, like I said, they're going to drive to Reno, they're going to drive to Tocco, they're going to drive somewhere right outside, or they're going to go to, I mean, where, where will these people move and, and move that business? Commerce, like Mr. Savage said, so I'm just, I'm extremely nervous with starting to regulate on the business side, however you have a checks and balances in Austin that's been put in in 2011, is that correct? And, and maybe, maybe it's a signage thing, maybe they need to have a sign on their door that says, hey, if you've got a problem, you need to call 1-800- or something, texas.gov down in Austin, and report an issue or something, and let, I, I'm worried about not only the legality side, but also staff, and we're already behind, and adding another piece of, of staff that has to regulate this stuff, or take in the calls, or do the things that's going to have to do to make the ordinance whole. I'm just, I'm, there's a lot more pieces to it than other than making everybody happy and adding the regulation. How are you going to keep the regulation in line? And then also too, you know, I mean, you're not going to make all businesses happy with this thing. I would be infuriated if I owned a business that is regulated already by the state, and then already regulated by the federal government, probably, if, if you looked into it, and then you have another local, you know, regulation that's not fluent and common with local communities. That's my two cents, but I'm open to look at it, but I'm, I'm extremely skeptical.
Well, we regulate lots of businesses. We regulate, the Health Department regulates restaurants, and we license taxi cab companies in town. So we, what we're looking at is not overreaching, and that's why we're talking about discussion with the people from the industry. Is that our direction to the staff?
I'm open to just meeting with the stakeholders, again, and just looking at the verbiage, and see if we can come to a resolution. And I'm looking at this, uh, concerns and of the consumers, and there's a lot of use as far as their concern, and, and I think there's misunderstanding in here too, because it looks like they're thinking we're just going to regulate and do away with the businesses altogether. So we need to be transparent about that and make sure they understand that's not what we're trying to do here. But I think we need to get together with the stakeholders, I agree with my colleagues, and just look at the verbiage and, and do like we always do, we sit down at the table and, and work together and, and make it better for everybody.
And Reno has already passed one, so. Any other discussion, staff?
If I may, for those in our, who've attended here, if, if you could, this is my assistant city manager here, if you could, uh, give them your business card or information, if you would like to be a part of this conversation going forward, and please, don't leave today without, without sharing your, your information with us, so we can reach out to you, and, and we'll, we'll get organized and, and, and set something up here in the near future. So, please, if you can share, Mr. Vine, your information, so we don't, don't miss you.
All right. Everything clear? Item number 12, discuss and act on a resolution recommending an appointment for the Sulphur River Regional Mobility Authority Board. Staff?
At the December 12th City Council meeting, CERMA, Presiding Officer Jay, Jay Hodge gave a presentation about the board's completed and ongoing projects. At that meeting, he informed us that Board Member Curtis Finley no longer wishes to be on that board, and recommended Council Member Pilgrim. At that same meeting, Mr. Path asked that we postpone that till he could have legal, do some research, make sure there wasn't a conflict. Subsequent to that meeting, we did our research, we obtained the bylaws, the bylaws prohibit any elected official from being on that board. So Mr. Hodge is here tonight to give you all a recommendation, if you'd like to hear from him.
Okay. As I understand, the bylaws do say a recommendation from the chair, is that correct?
Yes, they, what they actually say is a recommendation, what we've done in the past is the chair has made the recommendation, and then the city council votes on that recommendation by the chair. Then we have to send over to the county a resolution setting out a formal recommendation for the appointment to the board. There is a vacancy, the board vacancy requirement says you need to have, you have to have a city representative to represent the city's interest, but at the end of the day, the county gets to make that formal approval, but the city's input.
Thank you. We did have difficulty finding copies of the bylaws, they just some...
We got it, though.
Previously...
Yes.
But you were a good private investigator and found the copy. Thank you, Mr. Hodge.
Yes, we got it.
Do you have a recommendation for us?
Uh, yes, ma'am, and council, after much, after much consideration, I would like to recommend Chris Donan to the CERMA board. Chris is currently a principal at Hater Engineering here in Paris, and has also acted as the interim city engineer for the City of Paris for the past couple of years. I believe that Chris has the qualifications, expertise, and temperament to serve the City of Paris and Lamar County on the CERMA board. Mr. Donan could not be here tonight, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions of Mr. Hodge?
I think Mr. Donan is a, is a man of good integrity, and I think he has good expertise to understand the nuances with the CERMA board. I, I think it's a good choice.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I pick up where Mr. Prikage left off. I've known Chris for a long time and been able to work with him through city business, as well as on the private sector, and he's stellar. They have a, he's young, too, he's, he's got a lot of, of positive things for Paris, Texas, wants Paris to grow, and the CERMA board is, is extremely crucial to our, our infrastructure growth, south, north, east, and, east and west, so I, I support Mr. Donan.
All right. And no more discussion, I'll hear a motion to recommend Chris Donan for the CERMA board.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much.
We'll send this to the county.
Thank you.
Item number 13, discuss and act on an ordinance amending Appendix A Fee Schedule, Section A 10.002, Water and Sewer Taps of the Code of Ordinances. Staff? Mr. Smith?
Mayor. Council members, on December 20, 12th, 2022, we brought to you the fee schedule, but the water and sewer taps were left off. Staff is proposing a $400 increase for both water and sewer tap fees. The current prices were set approximately 10 years ago, and the justification for this raise is due to the rising costs of materials, fuel, labor, all that's gone up, and we're still down below, so it's costing the city money to make the taps. The $400 increase was inadvertently left off of the ordinance presented to council on December 12th, 2022. If approved, these new tap fees would have a moderate positive impact on the budget and would better enable the city to recoup the expenses of performing these specific tasks. The options, approve the amendment, amendment to the ordinance increasing water and sewer tap fee by $400 each, do not approve amendment, recommendation, staff recommends approval amending Appendix A to the ordinance, increasing the water and sewer tap fees by $400.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions of Mr. Smith? All right. I will hear a motion to approve this ordinance.
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 14, adopting a strategic plan for the years 2023 through 2033. Staff, please?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Protim, Mayor City Council, you have before you a draft copy of a strategic plan. As you recall, back in June of this last year, you had a, a council retreat, we had a consultant come in and worked with you to develop goals, vision statements, and so forth, and we received that final project sometime after that, and I worked with Mayor Portugal, Mayor Protim Hughes, and Assistant City Manager Vine, and we reviewed those, those final vision, mission statement, and goals that, that came to those meetings, and so we went about the process of how to develop a strategic plan out of that. The strategic plan is intended to last 10 years, as obviously councils can change it as time goes on, we know things change, but, but you always like to have goals to be aiming for, and goals tend to be long-lasting goals, but you develop action items in, in between all that to try to get us toward, toward those goals. So, um, looking at how to go about doing that, we realized that much of our proposed, much of our approved fiscal 2223 budget contained items that hit all those goals, and so I agreed, Rob and I went to looking at our budget, and we identified a plethora of items that were already in the budget, both items of, have fiscal impact, as well as a, a policy and, and so forth items, and then we went about putting those into the categories under the goals that were identified by the council. So before you, you have, of course, a resolution, but you also have a, a, I tried to do a concise strategic plan, you can develop one that's 30-page, 100-pages-long, but I figured some concise looks good. You have in front of you there the vision statement that, that the council had, had agreed upon, as well as a mission statement. We, we did use that mission statement in our budget this year, as you may recall. Just to read that real quick, "Our mission is to serve with professionalism and integrity, promote a safe and prosperous community for all citizens, and provide efficient and effective services for an excellent quality of life." The five goals that the city council landed on were, number one, enhance the city's relationship with key state and county representatives; two, encourage economic development through business development and retention planning; three, promote long-term growth in the community; four, retain our citizens; and five, market the city. So looking at, so looking at our budget, we were able to identify many items that could serve as action, action items for this current year. Then next year, we'll, we'll develop a new budget for more action items to, to hit those goals. So with that, I, I developed the, the strategic plan, with, that summarizes what we're trying to do here. What we'll, in order to give it some, give it some logistics, and what we'll do is, given we already have in the charter that I am tasked with developing the budget, it makes sense that, that we will develop action items through the budget, so I will develop those, present them to you during the budget process, and you can, you can approve or not, you can also, of course, always give us input through the whole budget process, and we put it all together, and, and we try to develop new action items each year, so. But with that, I'll take any questions you have, any comments, any edits you have, but otherwise, this is ready to be approved if you so wish, and the nice thing is, it's already in the budget. These are items, I, I can't guarantee we'll get everything done, you know how, know how dynamic our operations are, but I can say that some of them are already done, so it's kind of nice to build, create a checklist and cross the first few off when you start it, and so, but I'll take any comment or feedback you have about this.
Questions or comments?
The goal, the top five goals look pretty good to me.
All right. I will hear a motion.
Hear a motion to approve this resolution and strategic plan.
And a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 15, consider and approve future events for city council and/or city staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2000-081. No, uh, no new items, adjournment, I'll hear a motion and a second.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go frog!